Now, me and order is Councilman Watson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, in the God, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll put the agenda. Kyle LaRoe.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Here.
Uh, Councilwoman Broughton.
Here.
Councilwoman Watson.
Here.
Councilwoman Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovett.
Here.
We have quorum to do business.
Approval of the July 24th minute.
I'll promote the approval of minutes of July 24th meeting.
Second. Councilwoman Watson, motion by Councilwoman Watson, second by Councilwoman Broughton to approve the minutes of July 24th, 2017. Is there, are there any changes to be made? If there are none, Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the minutes are approved.
Next item is welcome visitors and I appreciate everyone being here today. I see a few people here that are normally here and I'm glad y'all are all here today. Reverend Blue, it's good to see you, as always. Next item is approval of the agenda and I want to make, I know one change. I want to move seven J and make it six A. Any other additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So, six A is a proclamation. I'm going to read the proclamation first and then I'll present it. Proclamation, in recognition of outstanding athletic performance by TR Miller High School alumni. Whereas the city of Bruton seeks to support and encourage outstanding leadership, dedication, and athletic success among its residents, and whereas Carissa Nelson, a 2014 graduate of TR Miller High School, demonstrated great ability and leadership as a member of the cross-country track team, helping lead the school to multiple state awards, and whereas a collegiate, whereas as a collegiate athlete at Sanford University, Carissa Nelson has continued to dominate the field indoor and outdoors with a national championship finish in the mile race at the NCAA Division One Indoor Track and Field Meet, and a third-place finish in the 1500 meter race at the NCAA Division One Outdoor Track and Field Meet, and whereas Carissa Nelson is recognized as her conference athlete of the year and is an impeccable role model for the youth of our community, now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council that Carissa Nelson be honored by the city of Bruton and all its residents, proclaimed this 14th day of August 2017. And if you'll come forward.
We can motion approve accounts payable for July 7th.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Broughton, second by Councilwoman Barton to approve the accounts payable for July. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the accounts payable are approved.
Next item is approval of the general obligation refunding warrant series 2017, ordinance number seventeen dash zero eight one four. And what these are is in 2013, we refunded and issued some bonds. And what we were looking at now is that interest rates have continued to drop in the bond market. So, we went to our finding people and got several bids on what it would do to, cost us to refund these bonds. This isn't any new money. It's not any additional costs to the city, but because interest rates have dropped, the city was able to save $471,000 in interest charges. So, we, uh, we refunded those bonds and so it's ordinance number seventeen zero eight one four.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number dash seventeen dash zero eight one four.
Second. I have a motion to introduce, uh, to introduce the, um, ordinance number. Let's see. Ordinance number seventeen dash oh eight one four, uh, and a second by Councilwoman Brown. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Then, um, Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
The, uh, ordinance is introduced.
I'll promote. What is it, Brad?
Immediate consideration, motion, immediate consideration for seventeen dash oh eight one four.
Second.
Second.
Who was the second?
I was.
Okay. Um, motion by Councilwoman Brown, second by Councilwoman Watson for immediate consideration of ordinance number seventeen dash oh eight one four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Mayor Lovett. Motion passes and the, uh, the ordinance number seventeen dash oh eight one four is immediately introduced. I mean, is, is up for immediate consider.
Now, I'll motion to approve ordinance number seventeen dash zero eight one four.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Watson, second by Councilwoman Broughton to approve the ordinance number seventeen dash oh eight one four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the ordinance for the refunding, uh, the refunding warrants series 2017 is approved.
I'd like to make special mention of, and thank Walter Lewis of Pfeiffer Jeffrey and Matt Adams of Raymond James for their work on, uh, these bonds. At the same time when these bonds were issued, Standard and Poor's, uh, rerated the financial strength of the city. And it would normally, the way they, you get rated, they start in the Bs, could be a C, but in the Bs, and there are three steps in each letter. Uh, so a B rating would be a B minus, a B, and then a B plus. A would be A minus, A, A plus, uh, and then you go to double A and then you can, uh, go triple A. Uh, in 2013, we were an A-rated city. In 2014, we went to A plus and now we've gone up again. We're now a double A minus. So, uh, I want to especially recognize the city clerk for all their work. We continue to get, uh, high marks from our, uh, finances. The next item is approval of one-time retiree payment, uh, resolution number seventeen zero eight one four.
I'll promote to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barton, second by Councilwoman Brown to approve the resolution number seventeen dash oh eight one four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wat, uh, Broughton.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the, uh, retiree, uh, one-time payment is approved.
Next item is a bridge inspection agreement with SafeSpan LLC, resolution number seventeen zero eight one four dash one, and I'll let the city clerk explain that one.
Okay, this is a, um, inspections are required for our bridges in town to stay in compliance every two years. And, uh, right now we have three bridges that are due for an inspection, uh, in October. And, um, the, um, SafeSpan has done those inspections for us in the past and, um, there is a, uh, the fee for that is $3,600. And, um, this, what the bridges that are being inspected is the main Murder Creek Bridge and the, and two bridges on, uh, at, um, King's.
King Branch.
King's Branch.
King's Branch, on Martin Luther King and Sowell Road.
I'll promote to approve resolution number seventeen zero eight one four dash one.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Watson to approve, uh, resolution number seventeen dash oh eight one four dash one, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Barton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the bridge inspection resolution is approved.
Next item is approval of a CD BG matching fund, uh, resolution seventeen zero eight one four dash two. That's a community development block grant and this is to work on the sewers, uh, in the, uh, Fairview Circle area and some south of that. Uh, and I think this is a 20% match that we have on this grant and this is an application.
Make motion approve resolution seventeen dash zero eight one four dash two.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Broughton, second by Councilwoman Watson to approve resolution seventeen dash oh eight one four dash two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the CD BG matching funds resolution is approved.
The next item is, uh, to approve a CDG Engineers and Associates Inc. Explosive Gas Monitoring Agreement, resolution number seventeen dash zero eight one four dash three. And I'll ask the city clerk to.
Um, at the municipal landfill, um, debris that has, is decaying underground creates gas, methane gas, and it can be explosive and has to be vented and it has to be monitored. And, um, it has to be monitored on an annual basis. And this, um, CDG engineers have, uh, they have been monitoring this for us on an annual basis and the charge for this would be $1,096.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seventeen dash zero eight one four dash three.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Weaver, second by Councilwoman Brown to approve resolution number seventeen dash oh eight one four dash three. Is there any discussion?
City clerk, when you say that there's, uh, they monitor this, um, gas line, is that yearly? Is that every six months, every three months?
Every, once a year.
Once a year, they monitor.
Yes, sir. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the, um, agreement to monitor explosive gas, uh, with CDG engineers is approved.
Next is an approval of contract with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood for a technology park traffic study agreement, uh, which is Dogwood Hills, uh, intersection by, um, Oaks Cafe and, and Walmart and what impact that our new industry would have on that, uh, intersection and up and down that, uh, road. That company, Prevalus, will operate 24 hours a day in three different shifts. So, with 300 employees expected at the time, we wanted to see during the day how that would impact that, uh, stoplight and traffic in general there. And this is what this agreement is about.
Resolution number seventeen dash zero eight one four dash four. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barton, second by Councilwoman Watson to approve resolution number seventeen dash oh eight one four dash four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Broughton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the Goodwin Mills-Kaywood Technology Park Study is approved.
The next item is a mayoral appointment to the planning commission. Jason Walker's term, uh, is expiring and I reappoint Jason Walker to the planning commission. The next item is, um, a council appointment, uh, of the waterworks board. Randy Nicholson's, uh, term is, is, is expired and I appoint Fred Barton and Councilwoman Carrie Brown to that committee to report back to us hopefully at the next meeting. And I'll call on the city clerk to present the, to the public, this is for our, uh, budget for 2017-18.
George Washington said, "We must consult our means rather than our wishes." And with that in mind, our first challenge in budgeting is to, to determine our means. Uh, to do that, we make an educated guess based on history, trends, and prospects. Uh, general revenues, as you see here, is, general revenues are anything from garbage bag sales to permit fees to tax collections. And that's sort of a lumped in figure. You can see there it's $8 million worth of revenues that we're budgeting this year. And as I said, it is based on the, you know, history, trends, and prospects for the future. The following four items, these enterprises, the sewer department, sanitation, gas, and airport, those are all what we're known as enterprise funds and they're self-sufficient. In fact, you'll see in the following slides compared to what the revenues are, they are, uh, they produce budget surpluses. Uh, once we've determined our means, we go through the same historical and projection process to determine our expenses. Um, and you'll see in this next slide that, uh, one through 14, the items, expense centers one through 14 coincide to the, uh, general revenues that I showed on the first slide. So, anything, you know, general government down through traffic, all of those expenses together are, are general expenses. And again, you see the enterprise funds there and their expenses, sewer, sanitation, gas, and airport. You'll notice that the, um, that the, uh, budget of 2018, the projected budget 2018 as compared to 2017, we have about a $4 million increase. Uh, but if you look just above that, you'll see what the main item is that drives that. Uh, $3.9 million is going to be because of increased gas purchases, um, in the, in the gas department. Of course, with those increased purchases is also increased sales. But that's the ma, you're, you can see that the increase in the actual operating budget of the city outside of that is really, uh, pretty minimal in terms of, um, it's less than, it's about 1% or so on a $36 million budget. The total projected revenues minus projected expenses result in a net budget surplus of So, that's where we expect to end the year based on this, this budget and with a surplus of about $273,000. Uh, you can see also in this executive summary that the, really the, the largest increase outside of, um, the gas is in general government. Of course, general government encompassing many, um, you know, many areas, the expense centers as you can see there too. But if you look over here, uh, under general government, you can see kind of what some of the highlights are of that. We've got salary increases, the variance between 2017 and 18 is about $46,000. That can be accounted for really in, um, in new employees. It's, uh, the increase is, is there. What these figures, you'll see in these, uh, slides from one to the other, is with the salaries are fairly minimal changes and they mostly are comprised of, um, adjustments to last year's budget where we looked and either increased or decreased. So, we adjusted this year based on, you know, so we can get closer to what the actual one, figures were. But also it will, it does, they include some, uh, plans for merit increases for non-departmental head salaries. You can see there that the, under legal expenses and audit expenses, excuse me, we have some, uh, you've got $45,000 and $39,000 increase. And, um, just know that the, you know, these professional services, um, are required today in that, uh, to protect the city. Uh, we did have some probably abnormally high legal expenses this year because we had three bond issues. Um, and that's quite expensive to do that. Thank you. But, um, like I say, legal and audit expenses are, uh, for, you know, to protect the city legally and, um, and financially. Let's see. Building maintenance is one of, is a larger item too in this general government expenses. This building is starting to age. Uh, we have been doing things like painting and, uh, replacing furnishings and upgrades. We need to wrap that up some as the building gets older. Uh, we've got to keep up with it. And you'll see also, uh, there's an item there in the, um, let's see. Where is this? Anyway, the civic center, I don't see it right off. Um, the civic center is also going to probably need a new roof this year. But, general government being one of the, if you go back here, the main driver besides the gas for the increase here. Program management. The main difference here, you see, it's a, quite a decrease, $25,000. That's handing off the theater program to the college this next year. We, uh, we cover the expenses of the municipal theater program this year and, um, it'll become part of the, um, be handled by the college next year. Police department. Um, you see there's an, let's see. There's an $18,000 increase in salaries, which is minimal when you're looking at salary and, uh, salary budget of about a million and a half dollars. So, it's very, very small. Again, this is, was adjustments, uh, against last year's budget where, uh, you know, with personnel, some personnel changes or just missing the budget sometimes. Last year, we tried to tighten that up and get closer to it the next year. That and then some merit raises would be included for non-departmental head, um, merit raises. Um, the, uh, on that note, the police department, I just wanted to say is, the staffing there has been very stable for several years. So, it's, um, there's very, been very little change in that over the last several years. Animal control, um, only normal personnel expense increases, um, not a large amount. Uh, animal control expenses, again, have been very stable, uh, last few years, but they're actually a good bit less than what they were, uh, when the current administration came in. So, that's been, uh, some areas been reduced expenses. Fire department, um, very small net increase in relation to their total budget. Uh, you're talking about a $3,000 increase in their total budget on a, a budget of over a million dollars. Public Works Department, also relatively small increase for a one and a half million dollar budget, primarily personnel increases, uh, as to account for adjustments over the previous year and, um, budget non-departmental head increases, merit increases. You can see, um, let's see, there was one thing I wanted to show you on the public works. Let's see. Oh, yeah. You can see some pretty large decreases in some of the, um, in automobiles and trucks, um, expenses. Uh, we had, in several of the departments, we've had some loans and leases pay off. Just good. Um, let's see. Municipal library, uh, personnel adjustments and non-departmental head merit raises. Um, and like most of the departments, you'll see here, there's one item stands out a little bit just because this is a fairly small budget too, but the, um, let's see, where is it? Telephone cost. Telephone and internet, got an increase in budget of $4,200. Um, all, most of the departments, we've had to increase about $3,500, $3,600 this year this coming year because we've got an unusual expense this year, uh, in converting to, um, fiber, optical fiber. Uh, it won't be an ongoing cost. We're going to actually see savings from that in future years. I wanted to point that out and that's in several of the departments. Uh, community development, uh, you've got a, um, decrease in the cost there. Again, this, this is one of those cases where adjustments in the budget from last year to this year on salaries and wages, uh, we adjusted it down a little bit. It's just, it was just a little over budgeted the last year, what, what it actually cost. And again, you see the telephone. And again, you see the telephone cost in that one. $3,500 increase. Information Technology. We've got one item in here. Y'all will be glad to see in that department, I put in $2,500 increase in vehicle repairs. They're driving an old vehicle that's got electrical problems and it's about worn out, so it's going to take some repairs. Telephone and internet increases again. Municipal Court. They've got a decrease in their overall budget of $13,796. Most of that is in the wages, salaries and wages. $19,000. They have one less employee than they had. They will have what they do now, but in going into next year also. Community Recreation. There's a fairly sizable change in this one. You'll see there's a $64,000 decrease in the expenses. You've got several things going on. In spite of the... Let's see. You've got a $64,000 decrease in the expenses despite an increase of $82,000 in this item right here, YMCA programs. YMCA is handling a lot of the recreational programs, mainly the softball, tee ball, Little League. That expense is being charged to Community Recreation in their budget here. YMCA is actually managing those programs on behalf of the city. Most of the savings are coming, you know, in reverse of that $82,000 increase, are coming from the savings realized from the golf course closing. So, you can see those kind of lumped together there, those items. But you net out a $64,000 decrease. City Parks. Just wanted to say that the, you know, this community has a really, really nice park system. And it's been... It's been really successful. A lot of our... The people in the community utilize the parks and enjoy them, and it's... But it is quite expensive to build and maintain these parks. The city council and the mayor have seen fit to make that a priority. And going forward, we want to continue to improve those parks and make them more enjoyable. So, we are showing an increase in the budget here from last year to this year, $63,000. And you can see under $2,018. Where's my... Where are these parks? You've got increases here at O'Bannon, at Sportsman Park, at Alco Park, Jennings Park, E.O. Wilson. All of those would be trying to improve those parks, make some pretty significant changes. One of the possible projects would be at O'Bannon would be an arena, a permanent arena. Traffic Department, negligible change, pretty much the same. A little bit of a decrease. Cemetery, again, virtually no change, bottom line. Sewer Operation Fund, dispersments for Sewer Department. You see an $18,000 decrease in the budget over last year, from last year. That does... In the sewer, I also did want to point out though that that does not reflect... There are going to be some major improvements in the sewer system this year. Most of that is going to be funded by grants. As you know, we've had the problems down, emergency problems with sewer down on Sowell Road, which we received a $200,000 grant from the governor on. Also, CDBG grant to make repairs to the sewer system in the same area. Up to about $750,000 is what's being applied for for that. So, it's not that there... You're in stasis with the Sewer Department. There's going to be a lot of activity there. It's just not in our operating budget, it'll be funded by grants. Sanitation. We've got a $95,000 decrease, and that's largely due to decrease in lease payments. You'll see here, let's see. It's a $95,000 overall. And you can see right there, lease payments are reduced by $59,000 this year. It's on one of the larger trucks. Just paid it out. Gas Department. Got about a $4 million increase in the budget. Again, we discussed that in the general, in the executive summary. But it's the same thing. You see $3,900,000. $3,900,000 is what the increase in the purchases of gas. The rest of it amounts to about $16,000 in the whole budget for Gas Department. You see a lot of red there, meaning decreases, and they're holding down expenses very well. Municipal Airport, dispersments. About the same in the... At the airport also. You see here, you've got a... Electricity is up. Again, that was mainly an adjustment in, you know, the budget. Under budgeted a little bit last year. And, you know, there've been some increases in the actual usage, but it's mainly just that it was under budgeted. So, that's why the increase mainly there. You've got a $2,000 increase in the runway lighting. They continue to change out lighting to LEDs. The Reserve Fund, you can see here, is a... Basically, a wish list. It's what we would do if we had the money to do it. As you saw before, we do have budget surpluses or revenue surpluses that come from each of our enterprise funds. That... Some of that can be used as we go through the year and see that we have enough funds to do, use to do some of these projects. Also, grants. You have bond funds, and donations also go into that. But these things would be done with funding outside the operating budget as we can. Does anybody have any questions?
One thing I'd want to point out, it's in every department, you'll see that there's a charge this year for cyber liability insurance. That's a new coverage for the city, and it just seems like there's more and more cyber crimes being committed to the city, purchased insurance to protect the city from laws caused by the internet. Have any announcements or comments? Barton? Any announcements or comments?
No, sir.
Go to your journey.